Session, it's the fish time, five o'clock. I'd like to call this work session order. We have most of the clock in order.
So move, John.
A second? Oh, very right. Thank you. I want to welcome Cherry Street Energies on our first work session. If y'all like to start off.
Is there a fifth one?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Pass them out.
Thank you so much. I'm Michael Chain. Cherry Street Energy.
Thank you.
With one full.
Thank you.
And Michael, if you've got an extra one, if I wanted Miss Debbie, Lori over there.
Do they have extras? Did you like the lead?
Yeah, only two. At least one for her.
Yeah. Two extra ones, if you've got them.
Original from Macon, Georgia. And so, first got to the kitchen and it's passed you there. Thank you, Kevin.
Is that, is that mic on?
Is it light on? Turn the...
Now I'm on.
You're on, you're on the camera.
On livestream. Fantastic.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you all for having us. We're a renewable power company that founded and started down the street. And now our customers include Macon Bibb, the city of Atlanta, Emory University, commercial and industrial customers. And we sell renewable power at rates that are competitive to what our customers pay today. And so, in Macon, these are through covered parking canopies, ground mount solar installations. And today, we'll talk about this facility, but it would be incorporating renewable power on the rooftop, offsetting about 30% typically of the consumption of the locations where we sell that electricity. And we do so through power purchase agreements, long-term procurement agreements to procure the electricity. And this is, again, fortunate through having experience working with Sam Kitchens in 2015. It was the, Macon Bibb was the first county in the state to take advantage of legislative changes that passed in 2015. House Bill 57 is the Solar Power Free Market Financing Act of 2015, which amended the territorial acts. So, the territorial acts passed in the 70s, created the monopolies, the utilities, whether the co-ops, the investor-owned utilities, or the municipal-owned distribution. So, that amendment allowed effectively four competitive energy markets, and our business became the first in the state. We own, operate, maintain, with time, we will improve this infrastructure to be a renewable energy provider. So, in our presentation materials, the, our punchline that we talk about, and that's the page two often, is that we sell solar power, not solar panels. Anyone else in the state that you've talked to is in the business of selling panels for installation. That is not what we do. We just sell the power from the panels. We own and operate that infrastructure. We'd like to do so on municipal properties as well as, we've talked about a lot of different applications in these. We view both economic development as well as job creation. This is local power that's going to be produced here. We work with local trades, train, train local folks, working with South Fulton right now on a training program. And these are folks that are both for the installation of the racking, the solar panels, and then the maintenance of them over our 20-year agreements. From an operations perspective, this is a four-slide, but so that you know from, what we deliver is no different than not knowing if the lights are on today from electricity at Plant Hatch, Plant Vogel, or Plant Shear. You also won't know if it's in plant gray on the rooftop. It just, our electrons happen to flow first, and as they come through, we monitor it. You'll see on the left, this is Terrapin Brewery on page four. It's a customer of ours. But we have real-time monitoring, I think Commissioner might still have on his... Do you have Solar Edge, the app on your phone? Our, our customers oftentimes use and like using, you know, whether it's just in City Hall or in Town Center, they post this. This is something that we provide to say, look, this is how we're incorporating renewable power. Terrapin has it in their taproom, that we put it up. And ultimately, we send a invoice every month, no different than the utility bill. There is no cost to our customer until they receive the first electricity bill for the electrons we produce. No better data set exists than how much the sun shines every day. So, while we do believe and can show that our rates are competitive with what you're paying and most likely will be less, we really try to promote the predictability of our offering. We know exactly how much power we're going to produce. We know exactly what we're going to charge for it. It creates budget certainty, long-term predictability, and we work closely with the utility. We have no interest in being antagonistic. They, they also, we ask for them to review our projections, our assumptions. We want to be here for the next 20 years. We definitely want to make sure that we're right about what those numbers are and what we project. There are a couple of different examples that we show on slide five for the types of installations. You'll see the bottom right is the sheriff's office in Macon. And again, this is at our cost. So, at no cost to Macon Bibb, we, we built the covered parking canopy, put the solar panels on top, and the sheriff loves it. Parks his assets underneath. In the summer, it's nice for him as well. And we're selling that power to the sheriff's investigative center on Third and Riverside in Macon at competitive rates. On Jekyll Island, we used a brownfield, decommissioned landfill to install, and that's powering the equivalent of about 135 homes. But again, it's another adaptive reuse for what otherwise was going to be just a brownfield. And you'll see at the top, this is a city of Atlanta project, the Martin Luther King Aquatic Center. To the left of it, because we'll talk in a second about this facility, these are load ballasted installations when they're on a flat TPO synthetic roof. For a kid from Macon, Georgia, load ballasted means a cinder block on top of PVC, which is what you'll see in the picture. It's about three to five pounds per square foot. But when we ultimately talk a lot to the facilities team and more broadly, they are very focused on what is the impact going to be to our existing. We make sure that roof warranty is in place before we get on the roof, and we're going to own it and operate it for the next 20 years. We want to make sure that it's done the right way. We make sure the roof warranty is in place when we get off. We're not penetrating the rooftop. And then, we just let, let the asset sit there and then work. And that's, that's what you see here and would welcome, you know, going to look at the installations in, in Macon or in Atlanta. As a starting point, so that you could get a example of, of the type of project that we would look at, page six shows you this, this facility and essentially what we would look to size the system. It's a rough layout, essentially to say a 45-kilowatt system would offset about 30% of the consumption in this facility. That's what we believe would be the appropriate sizing, based off of the load profile, when people are here and when the sun shines. We wouldn't want to cover the rooftop yet because the solar panels only work when the sun's shining on them. With time, we'd like to come back and incorporate battery storage. We think resiliency hubs, fire stations, recreation centers are great uses for solar plus storage. The cost of it, however, is not competitive with the rate that you pay today. We think in the future that it will be, so we just ask that in the future, we can come back and increase the system size when it makes economic sense to the county. So, we believe that if we started with closer to a postage stamp, we know with time, we can increase as it continues to save the county money with time. So, we would look to install this system and sell at a competitive rate, to the rate that Jason was nice enough to provide the bills for here, which is how we got the system sizing. We want to do a full rate analysis and go through to make sure and confirm with the EMC that it also, that our assumptions are the same as their assumptions for what the impact would be to, to the rate if we incorporated behind-the-meter solar. But we think this facility, and there are a number of others, we'd like to do a full energy audit across all of the buildings. And again, that's not, that's not at a cost to the county. We just want to see where there are places where we could incorporate renewable power, where it would be to the benefit of the citizens here. So, that's, that's the core of what we do. We would welcome the opportunity to partner with Jones County and happy to go through any questions that you might have about what we've done, what could be here, or ways we could be supportive. Thank you for the time.
Michael, explain to us a little bit in, in, in the closest layman terms of how we benefit from it. I mean, we talk about selling renewable energy to us. Is that an offset to our utility bill? Is it a levelized billing for X number of years? And kind of what happens once we get to a end of our 20-year term, because we know that the solar panels last longer than 20 years?
Yes, sir. Of course. So, the 30% that I reference is basically the electrons that we're going to sell you instead of electrons that are coming in from the grid. And that's based off of how much sunshine the solar panels capture. So, from a, from a billing perspective of what we send, we've got, that monitoring page that I showed is, that's going to monitor exactly the electrons that are consumed in this facility, and we just send a bill for what those are. And so, it is completely separate from the utility bill, but it is an offset because our electrons flow first. It's just, just behind the meter on that loop. The second part of your question, which I think is the right one of those long-term savings from the predictability, our rate is a fixed rate. It's not flat. Ours escalates at one and a half percent a year. Historically, the utility rates have escalated to a four-and-a-half percent rate, and most people estimate that that at least would be consistent going forward. So, we believe that if we're selling power today at rates that us and the utility and the county agree are either competitive with or less than your existing rate, then over time, you should save more money from ours. It's a long-term energy hedge. If, if you were to think that the rates would go down over time, then our deal's not a good deal. But no one that we've met with yet, and none of our customers believe that long-term the energy rates are going to go down. The reason that we're able to do that is because solar power is a technology. It's not a fuel. Our fuel cost is free. And so, while we still ship $2.6 billion of coal into the state every year, we don't have a fuel charge that we pass on. So, essentially, our business model is set up as a 10% cash-on-cash return. If it costs us $1 million to build it, it'll generate $100,000 a year, and we'll make that $100,000 for 20 years. The reason we picked it, because we were going first. Mayor Rickards wonderful for a lot of reasons, and I remember the first meeting I had with our business, December 9th of 2015, he stops me, he's like, "Five minutes in. Michael, let me make sure I got this right. You mean at no cost to the city, you're going to save us money?" And I get to stand on the front steps of City Hall with that photo man taking my picture, telling everybody I go on green. What, what am I missing? And because the law changed and then allowed this to happen, we said, "We have to build something that's basically the same as the utility, because once everybody chooses to do this, how would that be structured?" And the utility has 11% return on invested capital, that they, that's what they get on Vogel and everything else. So, we said, "If we have the same business model, then we should be able to say, 'We're doing the exact same thing, and we can be fully transparent on what our price is.'" And essentially, we want to come back five years from now and continue expanding the system size. So, we'll go from 30% of the consumption, incorporate storage, get to 70% of consumption, and still be able to sell less. So, our long-term goal, 20 years, exists because that was the capital markets, that would, effectively, the banks, no different than like the mortgage market. But they said, "If you can get Macon to sign a 20-year agreement, that they're going to buy all the power that's going to be produced from these solar panels." Essentially, they would finance our company and invest in us, to invest in that infrastructure to build it out. Same thing happened at Atlanta, same thing happened for Emory and Fulton County, and then more and more came. And so, we, we believe that we're creating the most accessible path to incorporate renewable power that ultimately is going to save money for commercial, industrial, municipal, university schools, hospitals, because the transition to renewable power is inevitable, both because of, kind of, if you live in California, the transition's going to happen because they passed a law that said by 2030, every new home has to be constructed incorporating renewables. Here, I think it'll happen because people are going to say, "If I can pay less for those electrons, why wouldn't I incorporate it?" And then, I think when we look to attract both new businesses and create new jobs, this infrastructure is going to be a meaningful part. It was one of the largest new job creations in the state last year, 30% growth in solar market. So, did that get to some of the core, both why 20 years, how our electrons work, and then maybe how with time it, it could save money?
So, essentially, if we produce $50 a month worth of energy, we'll save $50 a month on our utility bills from our energy provider. So, so that's how we, we can truly say there's not a cost to the county. Now, I understand not...
No capital cost. There's, 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 exactly right. Yes, sir. Sorry for interrupting. There's operating costs, but you're already paying the operating cost. There's just no capital cost. So, a lot of times, y'all probably seeing more than me, like on the, the comments of the news articles or people when they write about the things we're doing, everybody, the first thing everybody says is, "Well, nothing is free," or like, "Nothing is at no cost." And it's true, there's cost to ours, but it's operating costs that you're already spending and that everyone at the table ultimately agrees, and we work hard to make sure that that's the case, that the operating costs that then would come from our electrons are less expensive with them.
Commissioner Martin, do you hear anything?
45 KW. Other than just an initial project, is there a reason why you didn't go for 50% or a larger portion?
Yes, sir. Our intention is to not backfeed energy to the distribution, to the grid. We want every electron we produce to be consumed by you, and that's for two reasons. It's the more appropriate way to build the system, because it's not good for the distribution operator to send a lot of power back from distributed generation. And then, from us, from a business perspective, we hope to increase the system size with time. So, 45 was roughly, and we need to spend a little bit more time on knowing the hours, the interval data ultimately of that consumption. But we tried to size it in such a way that all of the production from our solar panels would be used here. And if we got to 50% right now, it's 50% of the overall consumption, and because the sun's only shining about six hours a day, there would be times in the shoulders when we would, would not be producing or would be overproducing, and you wouldn't be consuming.
Right. And that sounds kind of different than when I'm potentially buying a system for my home and net metering is involved.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
All right. So, we're not doing that metering? Okay.
There's no compulsory net metering in the state, and so, there are now about 4,000 homes that they will net meter, and there are some residential programs. But for governmental and commercial, there's not really net, net metering benefit, and you wouldn't benefit from that.
Right. And the reason why I ask is because obviously, if we have it installed here, and Saturdays and Sundays, obviously, we're not here, summers are longer, but we're offsetting utility expense at the courthouse or at the sheriff, which runs 24/7. So, that's why a larger project to me makes more sense if that's an available option.
It absolutely is. And we look forward to expanding and growing and finding this. We started here because it was where we were going to be meeting, it was an example of we, we can start with something like this. But our goal candidly is to be on every, every county property. My perspective is that the built environment of the future will incorporate renewable power on every structure that can support it, and we're going to be the built business that does it. City of Atlanta is not going to call and say, "Hey, the solar panels aren't working at Fire Station 7. What was the construction company that, that put them in?" They're going to say, "Hey, the power's not working at Fire Station 7. Who do we call?" And they'll call their renewable energy provider.
Right. And the reason, and again, I'm thinking of the sheriff who runs 24/7, he's like, Waffle House doesn't close. That's probably our highest consumer of utility in the county, obviously, this facility and then our courthouse. So, I understand this, but I'm really curious about the application over there. And then, if our friendly neighborhood EMC would entertain net metering for the benefit of the county and saving us dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
And taxpayers' money. At the end of the day, that's what it's about.
We would welcome that conversation.
Commissioner, one of the, when we talked to them, there were three, three locations that I've originally talked to them, and that was Sheriff's Department, courthouse, and here, simply because we're probably the most widely used. Absolutely right. Courthouse. Courthouse would probably more, would lean more to a ground mount because we have open space out there.
Right.
Plus, with the renovations and potential expansion, with a 20-year deal, we've got to kind of foresee what we're going to do in 20 years.
Right.
Which was the other thought about the courthouse, you know? It just, it being historic and, and the amount of energy that it consumes even on an eight-hour day would be beneficial to, to do some, some energy creation there. My thought on that is probably a parking canopy in the parking lot below it. Again, if we're talking about renovations, you know, those are the hardest to move if we, if we go, "Let's put it here," and then 10 years from now, we go, "Well, we need to build a building here. Let's put it on top of the building." There's some, some added costs for that. I think this one is, by the way it's installed, would be easier to, to pick up and put a roof down than put back than it would be moving to somewhere else. But those are absolutely viable, viable locations, I think, that, that we could look at.
We'd welcome it and hope to. And so, that you know, our agreements are set up as master service agreements. So, the same way that a, anyway, you get it. Somebody comes in and signs up for a new cellphone, is new, you know, you don't put that back out for bid. Ours would be the same way. It says, "Hey, it went great. We're either building a new building, we're re-roofing a new building, or we're ready to add this, you know, this new project." And that's, that's what we've seen. We started in, in Macon Bibb at the sheriff's office and government center, then added the Centreplex Tax Commissioner, South Bibb Rec Center. Same in Atlanta, started fire and rec, then added watershed, and I came straight here from working with the airport. So, I think that as we keep executing, delivering, and partnering with our customers, we see our install base continue to expand.
All right. And you said you don't sell solar panels. So, who are you partnering with to help us source those? Are we looking Clean Air Coalition and their partners as well, or are we looking at something a little bit different?
We don't sell solar panels because we buy them and own them on behalf of our customers.
Right.
So, we view that as alignment, because we only want to pay for the best. Oftentimes, we think that people are trying to sell things that are, sell them as expensive as they can. We buy directly from manufacturers currently. Our last batch, we bought from an Indian manufacturer called Adani. There's some Korean manufactured panels that are now being made in North Georgia. Bluntly, 90% of the solar panels that are made today get made in China. So, I've learned a lot in supply chain that I didn't necessarily know that I was going to get up the curve on. But there's, most of our stuff, one way or another, we bought some Canadian solar panels that are manufactured in China by a Chinese company called Canadian Solar. So, you just can't make it up sometimes.
I understand. Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I don't know if that, but we look for those partnerships. Our partnerships more often, though, come on the, and this is, we've had the Clean Air Coalition conversation. And we, we'd love to roll this out to the six surrounding counties as well. But the, the benefit we try to find are the local partners, whether it's civil, electrical, and all of our MEP work. Because I'm based now in Atlanta, but we've got operations in Savannah, Macon, here, and we want to be able to call, you know, I hope we do the ground mount behind the courthouse, but then we need a local, a local provider to mow the grass for us. And that's our cost, the operations and maintenance. So, to us, we think that those are the, that is the good benefit to the local economy. There's also some tax digest stuff for real property, but...
Commissioner, one other thing that we've talked about, Michael and I have talked about behind the scenes, is partnering for the college and career academy. So, that when we're coming out there, we're talking electrical installation, fabricating, everything is, that's a huge opportunity for us to have a government facility that we can practice on and work on, you know, during installation and all that kind of stuff. Real quick, we were talking about net metering and not being able to put it back on the grid. I think we've learned this in Bibb County, was the, was that fine line of not building it too big so that you overproduce, but not underproducing where it doesn't serve your purpose? Because overproducing, rough estimate, if you're buying it for 10 cents a kilowatt, is that what you're paying for the, for the energy? If you overproduce and, and you have to give it back to the producer, they're going to pay you two to four cents a kilowatt for it. So, it, it costs you six to make it, and they're only going to pay you three to buy it back. Your overage is back from it because they don't have net metering or, it's, it's a deferred cost that, that the power companies consider it instead of like they do on a residential house where they can give you kilowatt-for-kilowatt rate.
And what was our cost for 45 K, Debbie?
The, your cost per kilowatt hour? The rate, we, we believe, we've got to do a couple of checks, but it's going to be somewhere between eight and 10 cents a kilowatt hour, which we believe to be pretty competitive with.
And in all fairness, we got him, Jason got him, the, when did we get to him?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So, they've had a lot of time to...
Excellent.
So, I'm not sure, you know, the numbers have definitely got to be massaged and looked at. But we, we had talked about bringing the idea to the board and, and at least here, and what it's, what it does and the opportunities, and see if it's something we wanted to look at moving forward.
Michael, the decommissioned landfill, is that a completely different animal? We've got one of those.
We, yes, or sort of. That becomes an EMC question as well, because we would need to rely on, on their distribution. But we, we believe that decommissioned landfills are wonderful opportunities for repurposing them and then creating specific community solar programs is, I think, the most commonly used kind of colloquialism for how to describe something like this. We're working with the city of Atlanta on their Gun Club Road landfill, and then it would be, you can't have discriminatory utility policies, but you can have utility subsidy programs for identified populations. And so, essentially, to deal with both energy burden and accessibility, you can take a decommissioned landfill as the county, allow us to lease it for whatever rate we determine, and then you can have, they did this in Walton, actually, and then you can have community members subscribe to that landfill, and they can purchase that power at that rate directly from that solar program. Now, in some programs, they charge more for purchasing green energy, and I suggest, because I know that, because we sell Georgia power at four-and-a-half cents on Jekyll Island. And so, the question that we asked is, why can't we allow people to buy it instead of four-and-a-half cents? You already have subsidy programs. Sell it to them, it, whatever it is, five-and-a-half cents versus the 15 or 16 cents that they're paying currently. So, we, we would welcome those conversations. We think that they're wonderful programs that can be rolled out. We know that those brownfield assets exist and they can be repurposed. Generally, they're next to either transmission or large load, whether it's quarries, or in Macon, the decommissioned one's right next to the Cherokee Brick. So, we'd welcome the conversation. It's a different animal, but we think they're wonderful programs.
You just don't have a building to put it towards to offset your utility use, so it is kind of a different...
School's not that far away?
No.
So, for 20 years, it's, y'all's responsibility, I'll lie better upkeep.
Yes, sir.
Year 21, it becomes a...
There is an extension in the contract that it would extend, and it's also because of the nature of the master service agreement, we asked it to be 20 years from the date of the last improvement or upgrade. 20 years, as I mentioned, is kind of the convention for the capital markets to receive the financing. Our hope is that we continue to, if year 21 or 20 and a day comes and you say, "We'd like to purchase it," you can, and that's a pre-negotiated rate. And frankly, that's the case after seven years. The reason that seven years is because we do receive the benefit of the tax credit. So, one of the reasons not to buy panels, Commissioner Martin, versus buying the power is that as a non-tax-paying entity, we're able to take a 30% federal tax benefit that the county wouldn't be able to benefit from. So, there's an IRS recapture that lasts six years. After that, if y'all wanted to buy it from us, you could. We don't believe it's in the county's best interest to do so. And the same's true in year 20-plus a day. Or if you said, "Hey, it's been fine, but we're going to go our own way now." It's our responsibility to come and take the panels up and return it to the state that it was before the panels were in place.
And with that being said, because I'm not seeing very many of these, much like leasing a car, when I get to the end, I have the option to buy, are we pre-negotiating that rate upfront?
Yes, sir.
What the cost of that system is, and it's basically some payoff of that as...
Yes, sir. It's the contracted value, contracted remaining life of the contract discounted at 5% or the depreciated life of the asset. And it's the greater of those two, and the asset's depreciable life is 35... Um or if you said, hey, it's been fine, but we're gonna go our own way now, uh it's our responsibility to come and take the panels up uh and return it to the state that it was before the panels were in place.
And with that being said, because I'm not seeing very many of these, um much like leasing a car, when I get to the end, I have the option to buy, uh are we pre-negotiating that rate upfront?
Yes, sir.
What the cost of that system is, and it's basically some payoff of that as?
Yes, sir, it's the contracted value, contracted remaining life of the contract discounted at five percent um or the depreciated life of the asset, and it's the greater of those two, and the asset's depreciable life is thirty-five years. Um usually, the crossover's about year thirteen for us, um of like, when when would it make sense? Um but generally speaking, our perspective is that our customers aren't aren't gonna look to buy it because they're not in the business of managing their energy infrastructure.
Anything else? I'll set up your interest, please.
One benefit we get in the at the sheriff's department in Bibb that that you mentioned is the canopy gives you a covered walkway for the cus- for the uh employees to walk from the parking lot in, but it also gives you protection from the sun. So we were seeing where we had to uh resurface and repaint the parking lot every seven years. We don't see doing that during the life of the twenty-year. So there's there is cost savings to the actual parking lot that we didn't even take into account when we were looking at offsetting energy use. You know, we only looked at energy use and infrastructure cost itself, so.
I think it's a great point. Actually, the Butler Auto folks um who got a canopy as well uh say that they've gotten insurance breaks um from from their assets, because if they park them undercover versus uh not undercover, um they have less breakage from hail and and things like that, and they got some concessions.
Well, good. Any more questions?
All set.
We thank you very much.
Thank you again, Jason. Thank y'all very much for the time.
You're welcome.
Very much, thank you. Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition, Mr. Wright?
Hello. Good afternoon. Thanks for having me here. Many of you already know a lot about this, but um part of this campaign we're on now is to bring everybody up to date on what the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition means to each of the counties who and cities who are paying uh dues on a on a population proportion, and just to see if you're getting something out of that, out of that money. So what does the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition mean to Middle Georgia? Well, the first thing is we negotiated.
I thought we got that fixed.
So so the first thing is we in in two thousand and three, when we started this, um we negotiated with EK to keep Houston County and Monroe and Monroe County from being designated as um non-attainment. So if I stopped right here, every dime that you've ever put into this is paid back right here, because Robbins Air Force Base, if if Houston County had been a non-attainment, Robbins Air Force Base would not have been able to add all the different stuff that that they've added over the years. And so if I stopped right here, you would have gotten every penny back that you put into it. But that's but that's just that. Then with the solar array, the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition initiated the idea, we were part of the negotiating team, and we're putting a hundred and thirty-eight megawatt solar array around on the encroachment lands. And so you know that we that that um Houston, uh Macon Bibb, and I think Peach County put in money to buy those encroachment lands, and this is gonna pay back their money, like almost immediately. Uh so so this is gonna be six hundred, about six hundred acre uh array, they're gonna pay taxes, Georgia Power's gonna pay taxes, Robbins Air Force Base is gonna be a resilient uh air force base, and it was called by somebody, uh by one of the air force officers not long ago, the most resilient air force base in uh their inventory. So if Florida really is America's Sunshine State, but look at look at what percentage of states have added the most solar jobs, the most solar jobs in percentage, twenty-nine point eight, so George is number two in that. So in like two thousand and five, we got an appropriation for four and a half million dollars, um and we spent about three million of that on helping Norfolk Southern uh to buy a clean gin set so they didn't have to run uh that dirty engine in the yard. Um and then the rest of it was spent, spread around the counties and the cities where we bought hybrid vehicles. This is two thousand and five, remember? We bought hybrid vehicles, we did energy audits, we did um uh different kind of projects with one with the Macon Transit Authority. Uh and this is uh some of you may have been at this, Mayor Ricker, um and some of the elected officials cutting the ribbon on this new gin set. Um Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition has has developers developing energy projects, energy efficiency projects in every single city and every single county in Middle Georgia. And this is a result of four kind of the annual and accumulative savings. And if you look at Jones, what what uh what the energy efficiencies uh that that has happened over this period of time, it's an amazing amount of money. Uh and Forsyth just has had their energy audit, and they're expected to do for accumulative savings, something around between five and seven billion dollars worth of savings. All of that was done with an RFQ that the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition put together that these cities or counties would not or could not have put together. Um so the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition served as that served that function. The new generation of travel, we're planning and executing the new generation of transportation, uh electric vehicles. I know some of you have seen this, but but they're expected to grow to ten million uh EVs in twenty twenty-five, um and the EV adoption is expected to overtake gasoline vehicles by twenty forty. And as battery technology, the more power gets into the smaller package, this is just gonna be exponential. Um and so here's just several of the vehicles that are currently running off the production line, and and those of you who watched Super Bowl probably got got as surprised as I did when they said the Hummer is gonna be all electric, the Hummer, and you're talking about eleven thousand something foot pounds of torque, being able to go to zero to sixty in three seconds, that's the Hummer. So if the Hummer does it, you know, we're gonna have the Ford F-150 behind it, it's this this is gonna start picking up speed, um not the not for pun, but it is gonna start picking up speed.
Run a cold head, won't it?
And we're we're putting, we're Middle Georgia is gonna be EV ready, and part of the reason they're gonna be EV ready is because of the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition. Um EV charging stations that we're doing, we uh the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition has had a hand in the Forsyth EV station, Jones County has gotten support uh from Macon Bibb, Warner Robbins. And that's the proof of the pudding. That is ozone from the time we started this project, well, actually, not it later than we started the project, but it was even worse uh in two thousand and three, and we have had nothing but a steady decline in 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 ozone uh in ozone pollution. And the newest thing that I've been starting to do a little bit of research on for obvious reasons is a connection between um clean air and immune systems. And there is a direct connection between um clean air and and immunity. And we're trying to get some other, figure out how to use some other data, like has there been a drop in asthma, emergency room visits and and those sort of those sort of metrics? The Ned Sanders Scholarship, we have provided so far three scholarships at Mercer University uh for these kids who are studying clean energy uh or or environmental engineering at Mercer. Um we we partnered with uh solarized Middle Georgia, and as a result of that partnership, we've added these residential solar and commercial solar um throughout the region. Recognize, we have been the uh former Assistant Administrator to EPA, and I've taken Ned Sanders, Mayor Ricker, out, many of you, Daleon Martin, bit to to EPA, and they are always, EPA's always very, very impressed with the things that we're doing. And uh at one point, they called us the Holy Grail of the Clean Air Act. Senator Isaacson said, you know, I wish I could create you kind of guys on a bunch of other issues that I've got, because because honestly what we're doing, we're doing something regional, we're you we're having elected officials engage, we're solving each other's problems, and uh then when we come to Senator Isaacson, he's got a region that has a clear purpose and need and 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 broad community support. We won this Diesel Collaborative Award uh this year. Uh uh Mayor Matt Harley has really focused on getting LED conversion throughout the region, and for for the very obvious reasons, you can tell which side is uh is LED and and which side is halogen. So brings us to the to up to date as of Saturday. We went to the National Association of County Officials and at their legislative session Saturday, and we presented a resolution. Um and it's and what we're asking them to support is an appropriation that we hope to get Congressman Bishop to put into the ag bill, and particularly the Rural Utility Service, to put in ten million dollars into that, which can be used for any counties, rural counties in particular, around the country that are in non-attainment, uh that that they can use that money uh to 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 build capacity, like the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition, or projects like collective vehicle charging stations, energy audits, and all the stuff that we've been doing. We were the only resolution at the National Association of County Officials that passed unanimously and immediately, and without a bunch of folks trying to change commas on a word here and a word there. It was it was great. So here's our strategy for twenty twenty. We're 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 gonna make sure that every single city and every single county elected officials understand what we're doing, and particularly the newly elected uh officials, making sure they know what we're doing. We're gonna develop a consistent solar permitting across region. You may know that Mayor um uh Mayor Wilson of Forsyth got hit uh politically because the newspaper ran an article about uh this this pharmacy that wanted to put solar on the roof, and they didn't have ordinances for it. He got turned down because he hadn't he done the right kind of permitting. It just became a big brother, and so so we're uh we're gonna develop a model ordinance, a model model solar ordinance that can be passed or modified by by any of the counties or cities in the region, so that everybody knows what the ground rules are. We're gonna engage the Georgia DOT, uh particularly on trying to get a Green Quarter designation uh and to get them to modify some of their own practices with regard to mowing. And 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 a big sticking point for us is that the Georgia DOT and Federal Highway won't allow a charging station in a rest area. Um and that's because it makes money or or it charges people, and so so we're gonna try to figure out how to, you know, how to how to crack that. Um we're gonna try to migrate the Middle Georgia Middle uh Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition principles nationally, and that's what we're doing with NACO, um and and EPA is pushing our approach around the country. And then we're gonna try to engage the school system, which which Sam's gonna be a major part of that, engage the school system throughout the region for solarizing, electrifying, and getting a clean energy uh future. So that's that that's what we're gonna do in twenty twenty. I'll be happy to answer any questions uh when I have that.
Mr. Kissinger?
I got, I don't have any questions, so I guess I've just been hanging around it too long.
He was a part of developing this whole twenty twenty strategy.
Did I see your picture up there one time?
I hope not.
He's been a part of the solarized Middle Georgia for sure, I mean. Sam, one of the other awards that we haven't even mentioned, is Sam won uh won the Solar Advocate Award uh last year, so and he's been a great advocate for solar.
I will say that that, you know, that on one of the trips, was it was it in Washington when when uh what they called the uh Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition, uh the the basically the Holy Grail of of clean air?
Yeah.
Um that that we're setting an example in Middle Georgia that that other people are trying to look at and trying to emulate. It is, to me, it's the longest running stand of elected officials, that many of them that stay together for the same purpose and and continue to to produce results.
Seventeen years.
Yeah, continue to produce results, and 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 it's not, I mean, it's it's regional, so you know, we're getting projects done in every county, and and I think the the chart you showed of the of the uh the uh parts for me and going down so much, even though they lowered the threshold um for from the EPA standards have been lowered twice in the seventeen years that that we've been doing it, we're still dropping below their threshold every time.
We could have met any any standard they set last time.
Yeah, so uh I I'm I'll be um happy to see too when we see that correlation between um whether it's emergency room visits, uh health issues with breathing, or lung issues, or any of that, if we can actually show a difference in what we're putting into the air and what, you know, what it what effect it's having on people's health. That's that's when you know you've done something.
So I feel like this city of Forsyth is, I don't know numbers, but somewhat sort of close in size to us, and their savings were like three times ours. What are they doing differently to have such?
They own their power company.
Oh.
Forsyth. Forsyth. And that's, yeah, they they have a power company, that this Forsyth, City of Forsyth has a an EMC, so.
Oh, God.
They have, they are Tri-County in Forsyth.
Yeah, gotcha.
Uh but they also had a lot of um.
Well, they had a base, they had a low base.
Yeah, yeah, they had a lot of older uh facilities that had not been touched in years, and you look really good when you take a.
Right.
Nineteen seventy building and bring it up to two thousand and twenty standards.
They had not been making improvements at all.
It looks real good.
Any questions? I've learned others I've heard, but it's been, I've enjoyed this these two work sessions we had.
And I may not know, Commissioner Martin chaired this uh committee.
Oh, for sure.
And uh and ran point on a lot of these projects too, so.
That's exactly right. Some of the some accomplishments are followed directly with uh uh Commissioner Martin.
Look, I've just been impressed by the work they did. When I joined the committee back, I think, twenty thirteen, um didn't have a clue, was sitting in the back of the room, just kind of learning, and um when you sit there quietly um and you glean, at some point, somebody will realize that you're in the room. And I got nominated, and they brought me on board pretty quickly, and uh a great group uh of folks that are seriously committed to making a difference in the community, and not just the elected officials, the partnership with Mercer, uh the EMCs and the other entities around, Macon Transit Authority and so on, that have all rallied behind the agenda to make Middle Georgia a clean air facility. And when you look at the work that we did with the base, uh again, that was just amazing. So um had the trip up to DC and and was impressed that they knew who we were and the work that they've been doing. And Ray travels uh to come here from Alabama, so you know, don't hold that against him, but uh he does good work in Middle Georgia to make sure.
I wouldn't even mention it.
Yeah, but he's dedicated to what we do, so, you know.
I love this, I love this. And I'll just give you one example of why it's so gratifying. Uh there's one mayor, and I won't mention the mayor's name, uh but solarized Middle uh Middle Georgia went to brief him on trying to get some solar done in his city, and he leaned back and he said, you know, I don't give a damn about this liberal solar crap. He said, and then he held up this pamphlet and said, but if the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition wants to do it, I'm in. So the trust that we have developed, knowing that we have everybody's interest, there are all the cities and counties that we that we have their interest of our, uh that this is not uh this is not something we're patting our own backside with.
And it's not just corporations and 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 governments. They work retrofitting school buses for the kids too, so that makes a big difference um when your buses are sitting there idling and they're consuming stuff.
A six-year-old, his lungs are still really developing, and he's sitting on the back of the bus, uh breathing diesel fumes. Uh that was a one military, and it's an unsung accomplishment, really, that we've stopped idling in front of in front of schools, we've retrofitted school buses, so. We've retrofitted school buses with these clean, uh, diesel filters. I mean, it's a lot of small things. There's nothing, there's no big one glamorous thing, I think, that, that, that everybody does, and everybody gets to go cut a ribbon and all that. It's a, it's a commitment to a long period of, for all the things that you're doing. And I'm, I, I'm not giving up until, uh, until I run off the edge of the cliff.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, Jerry Street, we thank y'all too. It was very interesting.
Thank you very much.
Enjoyed our work session today. Motion to close our work session.
So moved.
Take it.